Are you ready? Okay, thanks. Okay, welcome to the Board of Education Budget Workshop and Business Meeting, Tuesday, April 19th, 2016. We're going to open with the Budget Workshop and Jennifer Buscemi is going to lead us. Thanks.
Yes, hello everyone. During tonight's meeting, the Board is going to approve the budget and also is set to approve the Property Tax Report Card. So we're going to do a quick review of Budget Draft Two, which is in fact, the proposed budget, and then I will show you exactly what we did on the Property Tax Report Card, show you the changes and how they are directly related to everything that we've discussed in the past Budget Workshops. But just to give you some numbers, our proposed Budget Draft Two is $38,773,989. This includes a budget-to-budget increase of 3.25 percent, which does seem fairly high, but this was explained in an earlier presentation that a lot of the new contracts that we entered into with some of our surrounding districts, mainly transportation contracts, where expenditures were included in this budget, and we also received additional revenue on the revenue side. So even though our budget-to-budget increase is a little higher than it's been in the past few years, it is, most of that is being covered by our additional revenue that we're bringing in. Our property tax limit this year is 3.2 percent. Our projected tax levy increase to fund our proposed budget is 2.98 percent. Our projected tax levy is $35,065,000. Our property tax levy limit, though, we could have went all the way up to $35,139,877. So our tax levy is under the tax levy limit, so we're under the cap this year, and we're under by about $74,877,000. This is just a brief summary of all of our revenue, and you can see that most of our revenue that supports our budget does come in the form of our tax levy. But we did receive $1.8 million a share in state aid. We also receive payments in lieu of taxes. We have non-resident tuition that we receive from surrounding districts who send their children, students, to our district, and also parentally placed families. Families decide that they would like their children to attend our schools, and the parents themselves pay the tuition instead of the district. We have charges for shared services, and this you can see is a huge increase from our current year of $85,000 to $249,000, and mostly all of this increase is driven by our new transportation contract with Wayne Scott. Grants, interest, miscellaneous revenue has gone up slightly, mostly due to a bond premium that we had to apply to next year's revenue. And this is our tax levy, which you can see is funding the majority of our budget, and you can see the 2.98 percent right there is the increase from year to year. We plan on appropriating about $500,000 from our ERS reserve, and we also plan on appropriating about $405,961 from our appropriated fund balance or year-end surplus. This is Budget Draft Two, just showing by function or by department, and you can see that we show very small changes, pretty much in every functional area except transportation, and that's also driven by the transportation contracts. We have a 19.63 percent increase in the transportation line. Our employee benefit line is going down significantly, which definitely helps us fund the budget this year and be able to sustain all of our programs. And our inter-fund transfers is also showing a significant increase because these are transfers that monies are going into our debt service fund in order to pay off all of our previous bond debt that we've taken out, and also included in that is our current bond project principal and interest. So that's why you see a 36.76 increase in inter-fund transfers. But the transfer to our school lunch fund and the transfer to our special aid fund to fund our summer school program has not changed. This is just a budget shown by object. Right now, I sorted it by percentage of total budget. So salary makes up the most of our budget at 53.67 percent. The next line under that, our employee benefits, takes up about 24.4 percent of our budget, and right down the line, you can see down at the bottom where we have just a little less than 1 percent we spend on textbooks. You can see the same increases and decreases salary overall is going up 1.96 percent. Employee benefits is showing the same decline as the previous slide. And then you have BOSI services is going up fairly significantly just because we are trying to purchase more services from BOSIs because of our BOSI. It is aid-driven. So salaries and benefits make up 78.11 percent of the 1617 proposed budget versus 79.87 percent of the current year's budget. So we're definitely moving in the right direction when it comes to trying to control our salaries and benefits each year. This is just one of the reasons why our employee benefit line decreased. Now you'll see the decrease was $105,674, and really that decrease is driven by this huge decrease because of the employee contribution rates, for employer contribution rates for ERS, and TRS have declined significantly. So for the current year, our employer contribution rate for ERS went from 10.4 percent down to 9.2 percent for Tier Six, and you can see Tier Four, which is most of our employees, fall into Tier Four, it went from 18.6 percent down to 15.8 percent. For TRS, you see another decline, going from 1516 the current year where we're putting 13.26 percent of all of our teacher salaries into the pension system, and that's declining down to 11.72 percent. So these rates have been declining steadily since, you can see, TRS since 1415 and ERS since 1314. So the reason why you don't see a reduction of $425,398 in that employee benefit line right here is because part of that decrease is being offset by the increase to our health insurance premiums. And this is just showing you historically how our health insurance premiums have gone up throughout the years. So we, of course, do not know what our premiums are going to be in 2017. These premiums are based on an annual calendar year versus a fiscal school year. So when we do budget for health insurance, we do have to pretty much project what the last six months of the year would be based on trend. And doing that sometimes is difficult because you can see the trends do, the trend does vary over time, and you have increases as much as 13.32 percent in health insurance one year, and then you'll see an increase of .46 percent in other years. So we try to be as conservative as possible for our health insurance budget line, and when you go online, you can see the whole Budget Draft Two in detail, and that will show you exactly what we are projecting to pay in premiums for every single employee group, including our Affordable Care Act group now that we have to budget for next year and that we currently started paying benefits for this year. So the impact on that increase, the 2.98 percent tax levy increase, is going to affect Southampton and East Hampton residents fairly the same because we are assuming that assessed values are going to stay the same as the current year when we do these calculations and determine what the dollar increase would be. So we are projecting right now a dollar increase of about $147, which comes up to about $12 a month. And that all is going to depend on whether assessed values continue to increase or decrease. And you could see for the previous two years in the town of Southampton that our rates have decreased. Our school tax rate per 1,000 back in 1314 was $5.25. For 1415, it was $5.22. For the current year, the rate went all the way down to $5.07. So instead of actually seeing a tax increase for those years, town of Southampton residents should have seen a decline in their school tax for the previous years. But if all else stays the same, they should see an increase for next year. East Hampton, we're projecting the same, of course, the same increase, and for, based on a home valued at $1 million, if your home is valued less or more, you can either cut this in half or just use a percentage of the million, or you could call my office and I could figure out exactly what we're projecting for next year. But we are still seeing that for the town of East Hampton, the tax should increase by $146.15. In previous years, it's kind of jumped up and down. We've shown decreases in the tax rate in previous years, but then we've seen drastic increases in the tax rate. And that's mostly due because the market value or full value of the homes in East Hampton have been reevaluated and their equalization rates have declined. So if the assessed values stay the same and the equalization rate stays at .64 percent, we're assuming the tax should come out to about $146 more for next year. This is the Property Tax Report Card. This is something that we are required to prepare every year and send up to New York State, and really all it is is a summary of all of the information that I had given you so far, thus far. It shows the increase, the budget-to-budget increase. It also shows you the tax levy increase, and then it goes into showing you the $74,877 that we are under our tax cap this year, and it shows you that Consumer Price Index of .12 percent, which really was drastically low this year. And this is what, when the state talks about a 2 percent tax cap, this was nowhere near 2 percent this year, this .12 percent.
Jennifer?
Yep.
Quick question about the public school enrollment. These numbers, are those, is that the number of the students that the district pays for, whether they come to this school or have services in another facility?
These are just our students who are residents of our district.
Right. No, I'm sorry, but my question was also, but a little bit different, which is, does it include students who are resident in this district?
That go to private schools?
Or go to services, get services elsewhere because they may need services elsewhere?
Yeah, yes, this would include all of our students that are residents. It doesn't include any of our students that are tuitioned in.
Okay.
So all of our tuitioned-in students are not included in these numbers. But these numbers are projections, and if you compare them from year to year, they do change, and they do increase or decrease based on things that just happen in the housing market in the area. So I have to say, just because they're projections, it's hard to say right now exactly how accurate they are until we get closer to the, until we get closer to the school year when we know exactly how many students will be registered. The only other thing that we are required to show on the Property Tax Report Card is our fund balance projections. And for 1516, when it says actual 1516 fund balance, this really isn't 1516, this is really how we ended the year, June of 15. So if you look at all our financial statements, which are included online, you can see that this is what our adjusted restricted fund balance was. This is exactly what was appropriated for that year, and this was the adjusted unrestricted fund balance, which can be found in those statements. And this is really just a projection, a projection of where we think we're going to be at the end of this year. And we feel that our fund balance is going to stay fairly flat, it's not going to increase by much. We are going to be appropriating some fund balance towards next year's budget, and our adjusted unrestricted fund balance, we're hoping to keep that at 4 percent. So we're hoping to stay at that real property tax level of 4 percent, which is the most unrestricted fund balance we can actually save as a district. And this is the same slide as the last presentation, just showing you exactly what the assessed value trend has been for both towns and also the historical budget vote results. So we really are anticipating having a large number of residents come out to vote this year because we do have two propositions on the ballot, and we're hoping that we do get a fairly large turnout. So you can see that we've had some years where over 2,000 people have turned out for the budget vote, but then we've had the years where we've had 800, last year was 966. So we're hoping to have a good turnout this year. And this is the second proposition, it's for the proposed purchase of the former Stellamar School. All of the information can be found online. The Board voted that they would, they thought Option Two was really the best option for the district as a whole, and the community seemed to support that option the most. So all of the Option One information can be found online, and we are hoping that everyone comes out for our budget hearing.
It was Option One, you meant. Proposition Two, but Option One.
Oh, Proposition Two, but Option One, sorry. They chose Option One out of Option Five. But we hope to see everyone at our budget hearing on May 9th, and we also hope to see everyone come out and exercise their right to vote on the budget on May 17th. All of this will be placed online, the whole presentation will be placed online, and the Property Tax Report Card will also be online. We will also have next, next week, the budget statement will be placed online, and the budget statement does include a lot of really wonderful information about the district. The budget statement will have not only a Property Tax Report Card, three-part budget, you'll see the district report card, you'll see the fiscal accountability summary on there, the administrative salary disclosure will be in the budget statement, and also the budget notice. And then we'll have our newsletter also sent out to residents in a few days. So does anyone have any questions?
Thanks so much, Jennifer.
Oh, you're welcome.
Excellent.
Okay, welcome back to the Board of Education, April 19th Business Meeting. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've had no one sign up for public input one, so we'll go directly to the Superintendent's report.
And I'm going to recommend to two of my folks that are doing their reports that if you can keep the mics very close, because I understand that our fans that watch us out there in the community weren't able to hear us. I got a few folks that touch base with me on our recommendations. So, Mr. Malone, when you are up speaking.
I will speak up.
Thank you so much, and maybe we can have, like, this could, you have, you have, you have an audience, so, because I'm going to have, Ms. Maritas, would you want to step up and do, you can actually go up to the podium, too, it's another spot.
Over.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is what happens when you don't have kids. Okay.
All right, so we had the High School Musical this weekend, it was phenomenal. Our kids did amazing. They did an amazing production of Into the Woods, all was celebrated. Here are some pictures. And upcoming events today, we had Father Peter from the Catholic Church come in to speak about Indian culture. The seventh grade all reads No Ordinary Day, and it was really interesting to hear the kids question for him with them because they were so into the book that they were reading to divulge into the culture and see what it was like firsthand, especially that the book somewhat took place when he grew up in India. April 20th, National Honor Society induction, it has to be in the middle school gym due to our construction projects that are going on. That will be at 7:00 PM. April 21st, the Rudishan Trust is hosting an Afro-Cuban percussion workshop with Bobby Sambria. Hopefully I didn't butcher that man's name. He's actually a Grammy-winning artist, and the kids are really excited. The people, the kids that travel to Cuba have a percussion circle as well, so they are excited to be participating in that. So that's in Mr. Solos' room, 2200, at 3:00 PM. Hawaii trip leaves April 21st, and they're there till the 29th. The kids are gearing up and are excited. We're all very jealous that they will be in that weather. Spring recess, of course, April 25th to the 29th. May 2nd through the 4th, the eighth graders are excited and already willing. We have the academic, during academic support today, they met to go over and review the itinerary for their eighth-grade Washington DC trip, almost like a introduction into what's next for them, their celebration for ending middle school and going into high school. May 2nd to the 20th is IB AP testing for our academic rigorous students that want to attempt those courses, so it's a very busy time. Every day we have something, either IB or AP or both during the day. May 10th is sixth-grade orientation in Pearson Library, 6:00 PM. We're excited to actually host it in the library because it'll be a closer feel. And then May 11th is a seventh-grade class trip to New York City, where they're going to go see a musical, go to the Wax Museum, Ripley's Believe It or Not. So we have a lot of things going on in April and May, so.
Thank you.
Thanks. And we've also invited our Sagaponic and Wayne Scott, our new neighbors, to be joining us for all the orientations with both the elementary and the high school. Yeah, that would be great if you want to join us for that. So we've forwarded those dates on, we're also going to be having some separate orientations for them as well, but we also thought it'd be nice if they could meet, you know, their fellow classmates as well for some of these orientations. So we've shared those dates with them as well, so that hopefully that some of our neighbors will be joining us for the sixth-grade orientation and the open houses at the elementary. And speaking of that.
Happenings at the elementary school. We are, good evening, everyone, first off. We are in the midst of a celebration at the elementary school, highlighting what we as a school family can do to honor and preserve our planet. We know that Friday is Earth Day, but all week long, we have set up some different events, both at morning programs throughout the day or even after school, to introduce children to the beauty of our planet and also remind them about what they can do as individuals to protect Mother Earth. Monday, we kicked things off with an outdoor morning program. When I, when I woke up, it was about 30, 37 degrees, so I was a little nervous, but the temperature quickly started climbing, the sun was shining. I think it got to about 55 when we did the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Remkus, recently retired teacher, everybody knows Nancy, she joined us and led the outdoor celebration. So it was a great way to kick off our Earth Week celebration. Lots of, lots of parents, grandparents joined us. Today, we had a very special guest at morning program, our very own Ms. Calliff. We are grateful to have her. She presented to the entire student body and faculty and guests all about environmental habits of mind and what we can do as a community and as individuals to do our part to help our planet. We talked about recycling and reusing and upcycling, and I thought what was, what was wonderful is how Diana asked the boys and girls to think about what they could do when they, when they leave the gym today, and think about what they do each day in our school or at home, and how they can make a decision to, to make a change. And I received a note with Mrs. Denon from one of our kindergarten classes, they were clearly listening to the presentation. Diana spoke about the trash that is sadly found in the oceans on our planet, and what comprises a lot of, a lot of that rubbish, and bags and water bottles, and believe it or not, plastic straws make up a high percentage of, of the trash found in the oceans. So kindergarten Montaldo KM decided that for the rest of the year, they're going to drink their milk without straws. And some of the other classes have, have joined, joined forces, so we may have a straw-free school for a while. Everybody's doing their part. So it was a great presentation. We thank, we thank you for coming in. This afternoon, the gardening committee, which is an arm of our PTA, invited families to come in and help out in the greenhouse and in the gardens, and I think we had, oh, here are some pictures. We had a great turnout, a lot of parents working alongside their children, doing some weeding, some planting, we built a new flower bed. Things are looking amazing out there with the help of members of the community. Most of the work is led by Corinne Olson, our science teacher, and a new member of our faculty, Deb Donaruma, who's a speech-language pathologist. They have a real passion for gardening, and they're, they're leading the way. So things are looking great out there. We invite anybody that's interested to come by and check it out. Tomorrow, we have a guest author coming in, our school librarian, set up this visit from Brian Hines, who's a local author, resides in Shoreham, and focuses on presenting books to children about the environment. So he's going to share what he does as a writer, how he spends time out in nature and gathers ideas for, for his books. So all of the different classes will be visiting with Mr. Hines during assemblies throughout the day. Thursday is a trash-free lunch day, we're aiming to eliminate trash from, from the day, asking kids to bring in reusable containers, cloth napkins, make sure their drinks are in bottles that they can bring home, and eliminate the waste. Good way to remind everybody of what they can do. And then we'll wrap things up on Friday with, with our Friday morning program. We know that spring recess is coming up. When we get back, we will be continuing, this has been our ongoing professional development for our teachers, K through two, we've been implementing the foundations program, and we have some training set up for our first and second grade teachers. And this is, this is the field trip season, for sure, and classes are visiting spots that they can walk to, such as Havens Beach. We, we have some of our classes working with the group for the East End and spending time in some of the local ecosystems. The 11th of May, we send our fourth grade to the Atlantis Aquarium in Riverhead. The 13th, our fifth grade will be seeing a show, The Lightning Thief, based on Rick Reardon's novels, which introduce children to Greek mythology, real popular with, with some of the young readers. That's at the West Hampton Performing Arts Center. I skipped over May 6th very quickly. We have our annual math night, that will be in the gym Friday, May 6th. It's a great night to celebrate math and getting, get involved in different activities around mathematics. It's a great, great evening sponsored by our PTA, so we hope you can join us for that. Last month, May 29th was a, was a really fun day at the elementary school. As you've probably read in the paper, the Mashashimiwa Park is looking, looking to redo the playground that's loved by everyone here in the community. What the park asked us to do was invite a playground designer in to meet with our students and gather ideas as to what they think would make up the best playground for the community down at the park. So that was a fun day, all the students K through five had a chance to share their ideas with the, with the designer. On the 31st of March and April 1st, we held our annual kindergarten screening, which allows us as a school an opportunity to visit with some of the boys and girls who will be attending our kindergarten next year. So it's always great to, to see those new faces coming into the building. We wrap, we always have end-of-month awards, April 1st, we had our end-of-month awards for March, and then we just finished up the New York State testing in both language arts and mathematics. And I thought the boys and girls, along with the teachers, did a great job on those tests. Here's some pictures of some of the fun being had out in our garden. Here's our pre-K planting some.
They're so little.
Some onions in one of the beds. They love coming over, and we love having them at the elementary school.
We talked about this.
Pictures from this afternoon, our gardening day. There's a group down at the beach, some first graders.
This, and this was cross-curriculum, science and art.
Our art-science program, team, team taught by Ms. Armchevitz and Ms. Olson, students were learning about the seasons. And I guess here's some athletic information.
And I can do the athletics, Ms. Brownoff.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Any questions if there was? For the important dates for athletics, the Athletic Committee meeting met on April 12th. Their next meeting is scheduled for May 11th, and when we go through the committee, perhaps Mr. Brown will be back by then. The Wellness Committee meeting, they met on April 12th, their next meeting is scheduled for May 11th. It is committee season right now. Pearson Athletic Awards Night will be on June 9th, and I know that Mr. Brownoff is already working on, I believe, a movie maker is the, a platform he's working on to make sure we recognize all of our student athletes. Sports, physicals, yeah?
I want to make an appeal, I'm on the Athletic Committee. If you're a parent or you just go to games and you have pictures of any of the students playing at any of the games this year, any of the JV or varsity team, if you could please email them to the Athletic Director, they're really looking to make sure they can showcase pictures of as many athletes as possible. Thanks.
That'd be great. Sports, physicals tend to be scheduled for the first two weeks of June and August. We've really made an effort over the last two years to get those on the calendars because our parents really need to plan because they, they're away and visiting, so we've made a concerted effort to get those on the calendar early. And homecoming scheduled for October 7th and 8th. Again, we're trying to schedule these early so our parents can plan. And these are some great sports action shots. I think that our athletic page has really blown up on Facebook with some of these pictures. And building grounds, I've gotten more compliments on how beautiful our grounds were. As a matter of fact, Nada Berry came to our key communicators, who can be, who's really seen our district over the years, and the first announcement she made to key communicators at 7:30 in the morning is how nice the district is looking. So I was really happy to have her, her feedback, because she, she looks at all of Sag Harbor, and she was saying how nice the district looked, all of our par-. All of our pails are full. I think they've done a really nice job of making sure that the grounds are just so well-kept. And we have a construction trailer set to be delivered this week. We're really taking advantage of, the equipment that we've purchased has really not only been to help facilitate the groundwork, but also to reduce the potential injury of our crew so they can work smarter and harder at the same time. We've also followed through on Chief Aviano. Before he left, when we were working on our safety plan, said that one of the things that he asked more than anything was that we have the dumpsters placed so that they could have complete access in case of an emergency. And Eric Bramoff, as the facilities director, said, "I will nominally make sure that we have the dumpster placed in a safe area so we have safe access." He goes, "I will actually paint the lines where it has to be placed at all times." So former Chief Fabiano has gotten his wish and the dumpster has been placed and the gridlines have been painted so that when they come back and they place it in, it always has to stay within those gridlines. So we have, so should there be, in the event of emergency, we have fire and our emergency personnel can have full access. Mr. Fisher. You're going to be able to hear me this time, Mr. Fisher. See that?
I want to also congratulate Mr. Fisher on, our communication boards are so full now with so many events that are happening that our students have asked that we slow them down because we have so much information on them. So congratulations, because he keeps those humming. Appreciate that.
Thank you. I try. Few things going on with the security project. At this point, we're getting pretty close to the end. There's some additional work remaining with regards to taking over the burglar alarm system here at the Pearson Middle High School. That work will be done during the April break. Once that work is completed, we'll be able to do some final testing in both buildings. Once we have satisfactorily tested both of the buildings and all of the different components, we will provide a training for all administrators and end-users. And once that has taken place, we will do a complete cut-over to the new system. We're projecting that to take place during the month of May at this point. It is delayed further than we originally anticipated due to those additional changes that need to be made here at Pearson or the additional work that needs to be done. But we're still moving forward and the project is going along nicely. At this point, we have provided the ambulance and fire department's ID badges for door access to the building in the event of an emergency. So each of the ambulances and the fire vehicles, I believe there are five of them, have badges housed inside their vehicles so that in the event of an emergency, they can get quick access to the building. One of the stipulations that we put in place with the use of those ID badges is that any time one of those special badges, those seven badges are used, I get a notification via email so that we know, you know, just to make sure that they're being used for the purposes of emergency only. When it comes to the police department, we have not yet provided the police department with their badges. I still need to work out a system with the police department, not only for accessing the building, but also for gaining access to our cameras. The arrangement will be that the police department's badges will only work when we are in a lockdown situation. Other than that, their badges are not activated and they will not allow them to gain access to the building. They'll have to come through, you know, the normal entrance and meet with the building administrator. But once we have that in place, I will be working with the police also to make sure that the video cameras will only, we will going to provide them with access to our video cameras in the instance of an emergency so that they'll be able to pull up in their vehicles and using their computers in their vehicles, access the internal cameras and the external cameras to the building. But one of the stipulations of that also is that those cameras will only be accessed in the event of an emergency and not during any other time. So once all of those details are ironed out, I have not even spoken to the police department since the turnover in chiefs, but I expect to do that in the next week or so, and we'll get all of that ironed out. Aside from that, the year is actually winding down for us in terms of technology. We are making preparations, actually, right now for inventorying the existing systems as we do every year at the end of the school year, for identifying old items that are no longer needed, and you'll be presented with a list of items that we ask that we can remove over the summertime, as well as beginning to place orders for new items and planning how we're going to implement and integrate those items during the summer. And as you'll recall, we use student workers for the summer to help us accomplish all these tasks. And I've already posted the communications board that Ms. Gray referred to before. There's a posting there for any student who's interested in working with us this summer to contact me. No takers yet except for returnees, so we'll see how that pans out, but I'm sure we'll have some good students working with us again this summer. They've been a tremendous help to us.
One other note, we met with the distance learning team from Owensy Bosse's, and Scott Fisher and his team were wonderful with them. So we've done the initial setup for distance learning. We don't have an agreement yet with the teachers, but to be doing distance learning field trips. So those will be going in this summer into the fall, which is really exciting. So the distance learning platforms with all the major museums, so we can be doing virtual field trips with the Smithsonian, the Baseball Hall of Fame, the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame. These are throughout, all over the country. So that is a really exciting link because we're about as far into the Atlantic Ocean as you can get here. So this is going to be able to make our children, no matter what they're studying, we can be in touch with just a click of a button. And many, you know, museums now are hiring, for example, the Baseball Hall of Fame has hired a history teacher and a full-time math teacher that you just set up the date and they will have a math lesson or they'll have a history lesson, let's say on Jackie Robinson, and that's part of the fourth grade curriculum or on trajectory. So they will, or they'll talk about batting averages. And so that immediately Velcro students right into the lesson and how it applies to real life. And that's what those, and it doesn't hurt the marketing of the museums either. So it's worthwhile for them to have, you know, full-time educators on staff because now parents, you know, someone comes home and sits there at dinner and says, "I spent time in the Baseball Hall of Fame today." And, you know, the parents then Google that and that's not so far away. Or the Smithsonian, and, you know, they have a wonderful educator that just talks about bugs and like the blight of the honeybees for a while and what that does do with our ecosystems. So this is a really exciting time for Sag Harbor, and we're really excited to meet with their Bosse's. As a matter of fact, the whole Eastern Suffolk Bosse's team came to shadow and to learn about what this could do for other small rural schools. So that's very exciting. Thank you, Scott Fisher, for taking on all that work.
So is that, it sounds like a phenomenal program. Is that, so every teacher will have access to that program and can figure out ways to integrate that into the curriculum?
Yeah, so we'll be training, you know, we'll start with the few and the willing, but I think once they start seeing it, they can schedule it. And those rooms, we're going to put it up in the library for, in the elementary school. And I think you're going to start seeing how exciting it is. Many of the schools that we talked about, just when it starts taking over, they do more than one room that makes it available in each of the school buildings because it does gain in popularity so rapidly.
So it'll be available in the middle and high schools as well?
Yep, yep, yep. We're going to do that here as well. And it's nice because we're going to be able to fund this through the Smart Schools Grant. So that makes it even better. Yep. So for districts' events, we have the upcoming recess, and then May 9th is voter registration day, and that's at the district office from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. May 9th is the budget hearing at 6:00 o'clock. We also have our educational meeting at 7:30 that night. We're going to be talking about English as a new language and some of the Education Law 154 that will also coincide with that night, which is, can be a budget driver. We've been very lucky because of the proactive nature of our teachers and our PPS director that that has integrated very nicely, but it's something to update the board on. And May 10th, this is not run by the district, but rather by our PTA and PTSA and by Sag Harbor Express, is going to be Meet the Candidates Night, and that's going to be at the Sag Harbor Elementary School Gymnasium at 7:00. And on May 17th, we'll have our school budget voted from 7:00 AM in the morning until 9:00 PM at night, and that will be at the Pearson High School Gym. We'll also be having an art show that evening. We'll have the proposed 16, 17 budget. We'll also have the bond proposition for the former Stellamaris School, and we have two open Board of Education seats. We cannot tell you how to vote, we just encourage people to come out and vote that day. And on May 23rd, we have a business meeting, and there will be no school on May 30th. That's Memorial Day.
Okay, so that brings us to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion for consent agenda items 1 through 6, please?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carry. Can I have a motion for business items 7 through 22, please?
So moved, second.
Any discussion?
I do. Jennifer, just a quick answer, because a lot of people think that when you transfer like classes, that 2014 left $800 in their account, that that class should have given it to another class. That's not how it goes, right? Because you have an approval of...
No.
Yes.
It's going to FDP regulations.
Yeah.
FDP regulations, they give you that money and that time.
Yep, that's what I was going to say, yep.
And I just had one question on the Suffolk admin budget. The revenues and the expenses for the post-retirement benefits. Are they collecting, are they collecting all of that from us and just putting revenue on one side and expense on, how does it work?
Now, you're voting on the administrative and tab of the budget. The actual budget is $332,955,000. So the difference between $332 million and $44 million is basically revenue, program-driven revenue. So our administrative costs are going towards payment of the administrative budget. So if you look on the summary, you'll see that the $44,325 is funded by $175,000 in funds, specially funds, this is, you'll see charges to post-requests is $12,614,000. So this year, we budgeted $135,355 to go forward by $18 million.
Okay.
That revenue is coming in.
Okay.
But you don't vote on the program budget because all revenue is from services.
Right. Right, okay. Thank you.
I just want to mention two things. On item number 17, I would like to thank the Josh Levine Memorial Foundation, Slow Food East End Mini Brand, for $213 and so on cents to contribute. Thank you very much. As always, we accept contributions and welcome that from the community. Secondly, I just want to, on item number 20, I want to once again thank our administration and staff and the entire team who has put together such a thoughtful, you know, budget from the ground up, zero-based budgeting, and how absolutely transparent and explicit it is. And it took a lot of hard work to be able to come in with a budget where our programs are not only maintained, but that they're continuing to be developed, and we still remain under the tax cap. So thank you again for all of your hard work on behalf of the students of this community and taxpayers, too.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carry. Can I have a motion for item, sorry, item number 23?
So moved.
Okay. How do you do this, Mary? You call out each name and then we vote by hand?
Yes, they did. No, we didn't. Yeah. It's on discussion.
I can ask you, please, if you have a question. We have a question for the eight candidates. It's just that the board, there's only six seats available.
The board, I remember.
Right.
Christopher Caprero. Mary Lee Smith.
Okay, all those in favor of item 23 amended to exclude Christopher Caprero and Linda Goldsmith?
Aye.
Oppose, opposed?
Have a vote.
Aye.
You have to ask.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for business item number 23A? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, can I have a motion for Personnel Actions, number 24 through 32?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can we just, it's okay. I was just going to ask if there could be an explanation of the need to add two assistant middle school coaches at this time?
Yes. The numbers, and I don't have them right in front of me, but the numbers started out very, when we started the season, were expansive. We were running two buses and they, both in the track team and in the softball. We thought that exuberance might, you know, as it happens with middle schoolers, might die down some, and it did a bit, but it didn't die down enough. So those numbers have stayed high. I believe in the softball, it's over 22 students, and I don't know the numbers in the track team, but they're high. So we've prorated, taking off the three weeks where we've been, and they're getting a prorated assistant coaching salary because the numbers, we want to make sure that the students are safe and they're well-supervised and not setting.
Modified softball has over 20 players and modified track start at 37 and is well over 25.
Okay. So this is really driven by a large population of students participating?
Yeah, the modified, and across the board in all of the sports, we're getting large numbers of our modified students. And they're staying with it.
Just know that we have a policy on that, that once it gets to X amount of numbers over a certain age sport, that's why we have districts, there has to be an assistant coach for safety issues. So this is not an option or a gift, this is part of our policy.
Any further discussion?
Can you have a student over 25 say a question?
What are you doing, coaching?
So is it a 25A? One says a 20% sports season coaches, the other one says a...
It's just modifying what 25 was. It's still 25, it just modifies it.
Modified salary.
I think when the first... Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I believe in the softball, it's over 22 students, and I don't know the numbers in the track team, but they're high. So we've prorated, taking off the three weeks where we've been, and they're getting a prorated assistant coaching salary, because the numbers, we want to make sure that the students are safe and they're well-supervised and not seven.
Modified softball has over 20 players, and modified track start at 37, and there's well over 25.
Okay.
So this is really driven by a large population of students participating?
Yeah, the modified, and across the board in all of the sports, we're getting large numbers of our modified students, and so they're staying with it.
Just know that we have a policy on that, that once it gets to X amount of numbers over a certain age sport, that's why it's a district, there has to be an assistant coach for safety issues. So this is not an option or a gift, this is part of our policy.
Any further discussion?
Can you have to number 25, so I was going to make a question. If somebody were, so is it the 25A, one says a 25, 24, sees the coaches, the other one says a 25.
It's just modifying what 25 was. It's still 25, it just modifies it.
It modifies the salary.
I think when the first... Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Yeah, that's great.
So that brings us to committee reports.
And when you do your committee reports, talk.
Okay, there's no, okay, athletic committee?
I can give that. I think a lot of it was covered today. What we covered was the athletic awards, and I don't want to cover the details on that because there were still some details being worked out, but I think at the next, at the next board meeting, the athletic director probably can share more details. We also talked about homecoming, which we covered here, which again will be in the park. It's Columbus Day weekend. One of the exciting things is the athletic director is working with some of the coaches and working with our sports league in order to bring more sporting games and sporting events to our homecoming weekend. So we'll have more teams playing here locally, either within the school or at the field, and there'll also be some additional workshops for the children of the community to come and our varsity athletes to be leaders in the community and help to coach some of the younger community members. So I think it's going to be an exciting weekend. So those were some of the highlights.
There is no audit committee report. Next is communications committee.
Scott?
Community Coalition.
Oh, community, sorry.
We're, the focus has become, they're already starting to build, it's a five-year grant, and they're already starting to build for their next grant, but what the trainings has been telling our new director, who has been going to the trainings with Kim Lobby from HUGS, is that rather than jump into activities, is that you really have to build capacity in the 12 sectors. Now, the sectors are our police, our schools, our healthcare, all these 12 different sectors that make up our community, and we have to build capacity. We have to get a lot of membership and a lot of buy-in. It can't be just Katie Grace from school and, you know, Eileen from the synagogue. It has to be all of our churches and all of our, you know, not just our police force, but our EMTs and our fire department as well. So it's trying to build capacity, that's one part of it. And the other part is also to get to, every community that forms community coalition has to get to the root causes. What are the root causes that, and our grant is centered around children, use of alcohol and tobacco, because those are, those are the, those are the starting places that lead to harder drugs and lead to children becoming potential, potentially getting involved in alcohol and becoming alcoholic, or their lives getting really off course. So they're trying to really delve into what are the root causes in Sag Harbor potentially, so that we can really, if you can predict it, you can prevent it. So we can get to those preventative things and help get the whole community behind it, rather than sort of having knee-jerk reactions. So that's where they're spending their time, and really trying to learn from the 12 sectors. You know, where do the police find their biggest concerns? Where do the education find their biggest concerns? Where do our parents find their biggest concerns? Where do our students themselves find their biggest concerns? And so it's doing a lot of digging, and what are the good parts is Sag Harbor has good data to work with. So that's pretty exciting. They are, the community coalition is working to host a workshop discussing alcohol, tobacco, and also the young adult threat of heroin on the 5th of May. They're looking for a spot to host that in, and so that, we'll be putting out that information as soon as we have that. So that's on.
Okay, next is the educational facilities planning committee.
Our next meeting is Thursday, the 21st of April, and the topic for the options for our future options for our athletic program.
Mash Park Board?
We had a board meeting last week, the same night as this, so I only got to go to the last about hour and a half. I think it was like a three, four-hour meeting. But, so I'm waiting for the minute notes so I can report on the entire meeting. When I got there, near the tail end, it had to do, there was a discussion about some of the tennis program, about the trails in the back. We had a pretty lengthy discussion about next steps in terms of the playground project. There was a discussion about how they came in with their consultant to the elementary school and what a wonderful and rich experience it was, and there were several of the park board members that attended that, and they were just so complimentary of our children and of our staff in the elementary schools. So, you know, we should all be proud, and certainly our administration can be really proud of how those students were so engaged, and the consultant was blown away with the creative ideas that our students came up with. And I really, there's a real commitment to try to incorporate a lot of those ideas, and also a commitment to come back to that student population with some ideas, some drawings to get some response to it. So I think that there's a really good relationship that's been formed there, and the students are going to get a lot out of it. We've also, the park board has gotten a lot of positive feedback from a variety of community members that don't even have children attending the school. Some of them are without children or retired, but really want to participate, both financially and also in the build. And so I think this is going to be a real community effort in getting a wonderful new facility developed there in the park. So thank you to all that participated, and thank you to Matt and his team, because that's going to make a big difference.
Nutrition, Wellness, Health and Safety Committee?
Prior to me coming on the Wellness Committee, there was a lot of discussion about changing the focus in the district to seven dimensions of wellness. So this year, we've been working really hard on revising the wellness policy to reflect that desire. So our next meeting is on May 11th, and we've been working on a draft in Google Docs, and everybody's been kind of just trying to organize that policy a little better. And I think that my question would be that as far as process, once the Wellness Committee has a policy that they feel good about, would that policy go to the Policy Committee, or would it go directly to the board?
Yes, no, it goes to the Policy Committee.
Okay, so do we have the date for the next Policy Committee meeting?
It wouldn't be at our next committee meeting, it would be the one after that. But, and then you would have representatives that would sit at the table with our Policy Committee to walk us through that, that would kind of, you know how you do a book walk? You would do a policy walk with us to take us through that.
Okay. Perfect. So we're hoping to have that finalized at our next meeting. So I guess after that...
So I'll put it on the calendar for our meeting after the one coming.
Awesome, thank you.
Policy Committee?
Oh my gosh, I'm up again. We have a wonderful committee, and they're very dedicated because it's really tough work to do policy. We had all our policies audited by Erie One BOSEs, and we have, right, currently we're working on class rank and valedictorian, salutatorian policies. We also are, we have in front of us class-based educational field trips and extracurricular field trips, but we spent the last two meetings with the help of Mr. Nichols and, and, oh my gosh, Mr. Guinan and God bless you, and Olive's dad was really what I was going to say. That's all I could do was...
She will actually become upset. She actually did steal the show.
She did steal the show, that's where I was. Really cute Olive's dad. And so they were very good and kind of book walked us through what has been our protocol for Valsal and for class rank in our handbook, that we are now going to scaffold up to make it into a policy. And so we had our second review, and we're going to take those pieces now and send them to Erie One BOSEs, and they're going to pencil sketch out for us a policy, which Mr. Guinan and Mr. Nichols will come back for, we hope, a final draft that will then go to the Board of Education, which then, of course, he will have input on as well. Then we also will be, we hope, sending you drafts of the educational-based field trip and extracurricular activities. Then we will be moving on, we hope rapidly, to the change order policy, which we're going to need for the building project. So that will be a guidance document, also a policy for, should we need change orders, what would that look like, and be very specific, so that the board can be, you know, kept apprised for every single specific change. And we hope to get some guidance from Jennifer Washamie at our next meeting as well. So we've got a lot in our place, so see why I had to have you at the next meeting? Yeah. But a very good committee. Okay, thanks.
Wall of Honor Committee?
We finally have a meeting scheduled for May 4th to review the nominations, and the plan is still to announce graduation and...
Don't make him wait.
Did you say we have a meeting?
We have a meeting.
Let's see what we're doing at that.
Oh, I'm going to write that down. My favorite song in all, May 4th Wednesday.
She's going to make you go to the elementary school that morning, you'd be ambushed.
Okay, any items for discussion, guys? Okay, any old business? Wonderful.
Wonderful.
Is there any public input, too?
They're rushing the survey.
Okay, so then can I have a motion to convene to executive session to discuss the employment of an individual, please?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Good job.